Principals to develop these. We pretty much kept the state guidelines that they recommended. And I, this morning when I got to work, I pulled up the website of the current numbers of active COVID cases in our area. And of course, this was done at eight o'clock. And at two o'clock, I went and sent them more. And when we developed our plan, we developed it on recommendations for the state, which was 1% of the population, which is, uh, Fuentes County has about 17,500 people. And at the time we turned in our, uh, our plan, we had 22 active cases in the county. Well, as of today, we have 194 active cases, which is huge. But if you look at how we compare with counties surrounding us, it's even worse because we have so many, uh, you know, most, uh, a lot of the small rural counties around us have, you know, 50 or so. I think Cumberland County has 101. Auburn County has 139. We're at, like I say, 194. Putnam County has 370, but they have 80,000 people living in their county. So our active cases, uh, Anderson County, which is Oak Ridge, has 125 and has a much larger population than, uh, than we do. So we've had some phone calls about if we follow the plan. And you have to understand, this is a plan and not a policy, and it can be changed. And we've gotten emails about changing it, but I wouldn't ever change it until, you know, the board was aware of it. But what I did today is when I found out, you know, I kind of got a grip on how bad they were, I never really compared us with other counties. And it is quite bad. And we still don't know, you know, the effects of what the pumpkin festival numbers will look like in a few days. Actually, the numbers in the schools are good. I have to commend the teachers and principals for the job they've done in the schools. Right now, we have 12 active cases in our school system. York High School has five. So those 17 are part of the 194 in the county. Which you can see, the problem is the outbreak of the county population having this illness and not in the school system. Uh, we have done quite a bit on quarantine. We followed the health department guidelines pretty much to a T. And finally got to where we had a Friday, I had a virtual principal meeting. And I asked him, I said, you know, these numbers are getting close. They were like 98.98% of that 1%. So I had him, I said, you guys want to go to school? Yes, the kids need to be in school. Uh, I said, okay, well, Saturday and Sunday and Monday, they go at 34. So that put us over the 1%. So you weigh in the different factors that you have. I want to reiterate, the majority of the cases are out in the public. They're not in the schools. But still, we have a plan. And I have some recommendations that we do. I, you know, I talked to Mr. Peters today and I called some, some other districts. A lot of their plans are not accessible on the state website. So we, I just went to call on different people that I knew and got their plans. I know Cumberland County is pretty much the same as ours, which we don't need to make any light of. We have a serious problem here with, uh, with this illness in the county. We do. So, uh, we had another virtual principal meeting today. And I was, I wanted to, you've got different factors that you have to weigh in. If, uh, people didn't work, if they have childcare. I think kids learn much better at school in front of a teacher than they do virtually. We're almost there with the students that don't have internet connectivity. Hopefully, we'll be there by the end of the week where we've got the connectivity grant and, uh, proceed with that. But I want to call my school principals and assistant principals up. We've got Jason Tompkins. Appreciate him coming. He's got a lot on his plate right now. And they can just tell you what they told me. And I finally got ahold of the health department today. That's the second part of our plan. It's a week consult with the health department. And I finally got ahold of Andy today about 2:30. And he was on vacation at the beach in Jacksonville. And he was nice enough to give me about five minutes of his time. And I'll tell you what he recommended today. But right now, the plan says virtual if you're at 1%. And we're well over 1%. And we do have a problem with COVID illness in this county, but it's not in the school system. It's in the general population of county. Now, we won't have the results of the, uh, pumpkin festival until probably later on in the week. But we did have one teacher that tested positive and sold crafts at the, uh, at the festival this weekend. So at this time, when my principals and assistant principals and Mr. Tompkins come up, and you can tell, tell the board what you told us today. The principals, your thoughts about what we need to do about school and charity. William? Wayne, you don't come back? Or that? Time for a few minutes?
All right, Mr. Jones says don't take long when I get there. But I will say this, I've been doing this for 38 years. My kids think that I'm old as dirt. I would say, Dad, have you ever seen anything like this? And they say, no, never. But I got to riding around the SRO and we've been knocking on doors and saying, hey, you need to turn your camera on. And I thought, well, I'd never thought about that years ago. But it is strange times we live in. Back to the COVID numbers, we have 59 that are on quarantine at this time. And out of 59, we'll have 15 coming back in tomorrow. And on Friday, we'll have 17 more coming in. So it's not looking hardly as bad as it appears. As far as teachers go, we have five faculty out. Uh, three of them direct contact with someone, exposure outside the school. Two that are tested positive. And we have one that has to stay home because there's no one to watch the child. Child's quarantined. But as we was looking at these numbers, all the students that we have quarantined out have been raised 3 through 8 with one child. All raised 3 through 8. And over the period of since beginning of school and now, we've quarantined about 100 kids. Not a single one of them have gone back positive. And Mr. Jones is right. It's out in the community. Uh, they're raised 3 through 8. Those students are more social. They're going after school activities and so forth. So that's where the problem is coming in. In the schools ourselves, uh, we're doing a lot of things like kids in groups, trying to prevent so many people being quarantined. Home rooms have to space effort from each other. There's no mixing in. They go, we've redone our cafeteria to get things landed out. Taking my paws. So all the schools are really working hard to follow the guidelines. But what is happening is brands coming into schools from outside.
Uh, my name's Tammy Norman. I'm the assistant principal of Mr. Cable. I'll speak to it a little bit differently than just the numbers. I worry about the children getting a breakfast, getting a lunch. I worry, I can't call DCS to report my children if I can't lay eyes on them. Last spring, when we had to go virtual so suddenly, really with no preparation time, which was not of our doing, the governor decides one day, we go home the next. We had children that did long on all spring. We were able to track down every child but one. Our SRO, we had to do multiple home visits to locate children. I'm sure you all are aware, but we are a very low socioeconomic county with a lot of drug-related issues. It's very hard for us to try to help these children if we can't lay eyes on them every day. And that's a real big concern for me.
My name is Wayne Crouch. I'm the attendance and technology. So I get a double whammy on this. So when we speak of going home, then I worry lots of, because Chromebooks have to go home with all these kids, 3 through 12. And, uh, we did that last year. And it was a nightmare because we just kind of did it bam bam. We were out and gone and the kids did not get Chromebooks with them. So we spent weeks trying to get Chromebooks in their hands. So, um, that's a big factor to consider when we have to make that decision at some point, is the timing that it will take us to get textbooks, uh, Chromebooks, cords, all that home with the kids so that they can do the virtual learning. And, uh, the other part of my hat is attendance. And I can say this, up to this point, we have been knocking on doors and trying to get kids that are on the virtual program back into school because they're not doing anything. So we've chased them back to school to get them to do something. And if we have to turn, go virtual, we're sending them right back home, back before they started. I'm not going to speak to health part of that. That's not my part. But those are concerns that I have. I do ask that you consider that when you make decisions to give us at least some time to make that transition. The, uh, I talked with Twin Lakes today. We've got over 100 routers for students that do not have internet at home. And most of those are installed at this point. We're supposed to be finishing up this week. This is kids that are in K-12, okay? We don't offer, um, Chromebooks as of right now. We haven't ordered the grant for K-2, but we don't have the supply right now to offer that to the K-2. But, um, for those that are going to be home without internet connectivity, we have worked with the state to get Twin Lakes to install that. And they've been working on that for over a month or so now, trying to get that connected. And, uh, we're down to handful of kids that don't have that connectivity. But they will be in place hopefully by the end of this week, mid next week. And if we were to go virtual at some point, then those kids that do not have internet normally at home would be able to connect.
So this week, next week is going to be a zero week because that's fall break.
Correct.
So there'll be nothing. So what you're saying is if we can give you a Friday, then there's going to be that off week if you work all week. And then if we throw another week maybe, then we can do virtual like last week. You come back after 14 days. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, based on what Wayne was telling me, all the students that were turned in to me that did not have internet, if we can get through the fall break, that should be installed at that point. And then the majority of those kids that don't have internet at home would have the accessibility to make that connection with a Chromebook and do the virtual learning.
Do they have enough Chromebooks or can see how many have 20 now?
Not, not all K-2. We do have, um, those kids that don't have internet. We, we pulled aside a Chromebook for them. Because that was part of the package with Twin Lakes in order to give internet to those kids. At 25 bucks a month, we had, we're about a device. So we have that device ready for those K-2, but not for the mass K-2.
In your opinion, what percentage would be exactly if this question was asked? I know that's a question.
Yeah, that's probably a different question for someone else. More of the principals or something like that. All I get is the calls that he says so-and-so's doing nothing.
So what if, uh, what do they do? Like, so we go virtual and these kids, their parents are, number one, they're living with their parent and has no idea that they're running. Number three, the parent has to work in their home by themselves because no one's watching them. What if they don't do their work? What's their grades like? What incentive do they have to do their work?
Ms. Felicia, we've been fighting that since day one with the virtual kids.
Right. And that's just something else I think we have to think about. I'm not an advocate to stay in school, but that's the problem.
Well, part of that is when everybody comes back, we will get them back. It's not likely the most large when you're sawing them.
Right.
So whenever they got back, those that were really far behind would be giving work for college.
So they didn't, I mean, but I guess my question is more, uh, what's going to, what's going to be done to them if they don't do the work while they're gone? But yes, it's okay. Why not? This is then because you can hear me. Go ahead, you need to sit with us until I can run on.
Okay.
Ms. Darrell? Okay. Today I talked to Wayne about a couple of students that we had. And, um, what we're going to do is just make an appointment with the guardians, have them come in, show them where they signed off, saying that they moved their part. And, uh, in particular, we had one little boy that was virtual, came back to school, got quarantined. So there's three weeks of work that he's not done. Nothing. No grades. So...
One thing that we've done is we've knocked on doors. And in our virtual learning, they signed a contract that at the end of the nine-weeks grading period, if they're not doing well, they come back. So Tammy and I, we constantly look at these students. Who do we need to talk to? I've made numerous phone calls. I've knocked on doors. And we brought two back and said, listen, they're not doing the work. They're failing. I want them back in school. So they showed up back there. So it is a constant battle though. I mean, you have to stay on it. Who's logging on? Who's logging off? Um, for little people, I tell you what my daughter said as compared to her son. He's six, he's six years old and he goes to Whisbit County. And she summed it up like this. She said, watching 27 first graders on virtual learning is like a Saturday night live skit. She said others also, just pick. But it's a constant battle to keep them logged on and to keep them engaged.
Thank you.
The homes where we have had to go are not great. Um, to the point, the SRO called me one night at home and he said, listen, Ms. Tammy, you do not go here without me. It is not safe. You do not go check on that student without me. So when we go to have to knock it on doors, you know, some of the places are pretty bad. So...
Now I want to pick up off that real quick. Last summer, we had two students that we tried to track down. These were little feathers, like first grade, second grade. Uh, Jason Gunnar, our school resource officer, searched all summer long. Finally, those students showed up in Florida, but we worried about them all all summer long. Now, I've made trips to Wilder to check on kids. And I'm just going to give you a few numbers. Our virtual right now, and Ms. Christie is not here tonight. Her uncle passed away. But while I've been out, she has took care of all of this. And I wish you could be here to answer the questions. We have 32 virtual students and the majority are in fifth, sixth, and seventh grade. And we have had 230 quarantined this year. Right now, we have 61 quarantined. Uh, most of them have been in 38. There's been 17 in K-32. Now, from what I saw, um, with the kids that have been quarantined, we've already told you, trouble getting their work, trouble getting a parent. I need a pencil. I need paper. I've got to go to the bathroom. Get out of the bed, get a place to sit, have a quiet place, turn the TV off. So it's just up and constantly. But not only that, I think about the students like Ms. Tammy said, that when they come, they get breakfast, they get a lunch. They have a teacher that cares for them and is willing to spend that time with them. I have teachers at my school that come in. Uh, I have three that come in early in the morning at seven o'clock. And those kids take their breakfast to their classrooms and they eat there. They keep them and they watch over them. And they're being educated by, you know, somebody that knows what they're doing and living. Uh, it does concern me that we don't always know where our children are at. And I've wrote service good buses just to see where they do live. And it's, it's sad to see that some, especially in law, that these kids need to be in school where they can have food, they can do more. Um, we pass out clothes and getting medical attention. And, um, I think, I can speak for all these folks up here. We love them and we watch over them. And we might be considered their guardian angel because we love them. But I think it's good to be in school.
I'll start off by saying until this afternoon, Mr. Milbury said that he got on their site and said we were up to 194 cases. And I know when the plan was put in place, the COP, the continual learning plan, you know, I'm sure that our thought was we'll never reach that 187 number. Well, we're there. And now we're thinking what's best for the kids. Um, I'm like them, you know? School is more than just academic card anymore. Most of you all know, you know, it's meals, it's counseling, it's somebody telling them, hey, I love you. And, um, Pine Haven has quarantined lots. I mean, I don't know, we might be the biggest school in the county that's quarantined. I'm not really sure of my numbers. I did not come with those numbers. But, um, we have had several kids that are positive. I don't know that any of those kids, except for one group, were really positive. They were, it was more of an outside of the school setting where they were positive. Today, we quarantined four or five kids. Every one of those kids were not at Pine Haven today. Parents called in and said, hey, I'm positive, daddy's positive, something like that. They're out 24 days. The only way they're coming back earlier is if that child turns around and tests positive, then we will go back and look at those quarantine days and they'll be out 10 days as long as they're symptom-free for 24 hours on that 10th day. So, um, I do know that one class was quarantined. We've quarantined two whole classes, a first grade and a second grade. Both of them was because teachers were positive. And in my first grade classroom, I did have three kids out of that classroom within that 14-day span. Three of those kids ended up positive. So I don't know if that was because of the teacher. I have no clue. But I do know out of that one classroom, there were three kids, three kids that were positive. The rest of the kids are like everybody else. It's coming from home or it's coming from outside or getting all of this stuff. Uh, what's bad is I had one child at the very beginning of the year, kindergarten student, Miss Jenny can attest to this. She didn't beckon the doors until September the 8th. She missed the whole month of school. Brother was positive. Three or four days later, daddy was positive. We had to start all over again. You know, a week or week and a half later, mama was positive. We had to start our 24 days over again. So every time someone in that household tests positive, we're starting those days over again and that's longer that they're out of school. So that is a big concern. Um, I do ask that if you vote tonight to send us virtual, please give us a day or two. Teachers need time to prepare, to get things ready for kids, go home. Uh, parents need time. I mean, I know Felicia said, you know, what do you do with your kids? You know, parents have got to have time to decide. Everybody just can't stay home, you know? What are you going to do with your kids? Where are they going to go? Daycare's, and daycare's people and that type of stuff, you know? That's a big concern.
In your opinion, what percentage of kids learn from virtual?
Um, I think it's higher than, I think that we've got a pretty high percent that kids can learn from virtual. But you've got those few that are, we are constantly, Mr. Milbury and the SRO officer, Mr. Wesley have made several home visits this year. You know, the last home visit they made was a little boy that was quarantined. Mama says, we're trying to get on, trying to get on. So Mr. Milbury says, let me talk to him. Well, he was in the bed. So we're dealing with a lot of that type stuff. But then we've got these one kids that, I mean, they're on it constantly. And the one good thing that I've seen is the communication with the teachers and the parents. I was in for a chewing. We were sitting there while Mr. Jones was talking. Uh, some of the virtual teachers had sent, hey, I'm having trouble with this child. I'm going to keep you updated. So I was giving them some advice on what to do.
How does the virtual class group set up? Are they scheduled to start at some point in the day?
So if they're a virtual student, a virtual learning student, and we're not going, the entire class is not going virtual, they have schedules. So the third, fourth, and fifth grade teachers, which is Tammy Linda, Tammy Linder, Becky Johnson, and Stacy, they got together and they developed schedules so that they didn't overlap because they're testing. Tammy, Tammy is teaching third grade ELA, fourth grade ELA, fifth grade ELA. So she had to have three different spots for that time. Um, what we do is like, if you're quarantining and you're at school, I send home a letter with you. And it gives you quarantine dates on the back of that. It has your schedule. But if I quarantine a whole classroom and that teacher is not seeing, then that teacher teaches that whole classroom.
My question is, are they expected to be sitting here and talking to the computer?
No. There, there is some breaks. So like right now, we don't have our TI up and completely running. We are pulling some of our tier three, some more intensive intervention going on. But there are encore breaks, lunch breaks, some things like that the kids can get up and go.
Does that change the grade level?
It does. It's a difference. And it, that's what I'm going to say. A teacher might teach for 30 minutes out of the 90. And it's in their Google classroom, so therefore, you know, they may even give them 30, 45 minutes to work on that and they're still online if they have questions. You do. We, you know, that's one of the things and that's been brought up. You know, how do we keep them engaged?
Well, I have another question. And I'm, you may remember this, I'm at the Denver night. How do they test these virtual students that are completely virtual?
Chrissy, you want to speak to that?
We are working that. At the beginning of the year, we did a orientation, a parent orientation. And, um, the families that were going to go are true virtual students. So if it's a true virtual student, they come in, they're scheduled to come in. We're trying to work on it. We did revise the, um, our budgets to include paying stop them for somebody to stay at their school so if they don't want to come in. our budgets to include paying stop-in for somebody to stay at their school. So if they don't want to come in during the day, and miss classroom instruction that we can have a time after school. We're trying to get that up and going. But they get style insurance, but they will come in and test. Now, we are still having some challenges with that. Kids that are on quarantine are not just going to like come back and out of quarantine.
So your virtual stages, a lot of them are virtual for brief. You know, there's some illness, there's something wrong with the child, but, uh, parents have concerns about coming in the building or bringing their child in the building. When parents in, testing and then going out, even if it's just the virtual students. And like she said, they worked on, we've not started the afternoon stuff yet, but you all have put in places stopping to pay somebody to stay after school to allow some testing to go on.
Uh, another question, this is probably for Mr. Jones. Um, so say like one thing, we, we do everybody virtually. We can't do it for a Wednesday because we want to give you other people. What's the difference in Wednesday and Friday? I mean, you know, if we're going to, we're going to go that far in a week, sometimes it's just, you got two more days to work on. Whatever, that's just, so anyway, we have to add an extra week.
For our purposes?
Well, no, I'm just saying, we're like, this, this is just a, I'm just trying to lead everyone I'm trying to ask, I guess. So we have fourteen days of quarantine and I know because COVID, you know, there's some different things, but the governor said we're going to give a hundred-and-eighty-six of, you know, have instructions. You're going to get your hundred-and-eighty-six. So where do we tag on that extra five days? Do we?
You don't. It'll be Thursday. That's right.
So they're going to just say-
So let's say we go all this week and then we're out next week for fall break and then we're out the next week for, to finish up the fourteen days. That, that following week after fall break, all of our adults will be in the building. And they will continue to teach virtually. Three-eighth, kids will be logging on to their regular schedules and they will be teaching. K-two may look a little different. K-two may have some packets. But teachers have, you know, I think Chrissy and them can tell me if I'm wrong, but they're going to have to be checking in on those kids. They're going to have to be making contact with those kids and seeing what they need for that five days of instruction outside of just sending one more package and saying, here. Do that in five days and bring it back. They won't. If you all go in tonight or in the next few days and you admit this plan, you all look at it and you say, okay, let's look at it by Pine Haven or by Allard or South Fentress. We may not meet those numbers the week after fall break, so we may come back to school anyway.
According to the plan, if I can interrupt you just a minute, there's two things tonight that we need to consider. One is the plan that we're working over right now, which involves all of Fentress County. We're going by their numbers right now. Now, if you look at the, uh, CLP that they talked about earlier and you take that into consideration, I've talked to the district's waiver. We're one of the few counties that are doing it countywide. So in essence, what we're doing is if you look at it and you look at all the schools and this is as of today, Oden County has their CLP set at thirteen to fifteen percent, either positive or direct exposure. Now, if you want to look at Fentress County's school system, Allard Elementary School that I taught today was at a fifteen percent threshold. Sorry, Allard. Larkland High School was two percent, Pine Haven Elementary was four percent, South Fentress Elementary was nine percent, and York Elementary was three percent. So if you change the CLP tonight to those workable numbers, then you're not, the only school today that would be in close within Allard Elementary School. Then those folks will come back and, 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 and. But, you know.
Well, I, I'm just saying that. Just from my practice alone, I'm saying about office, not everybody that's symptomatic is being tested. So the numbers are huge anyways because everybody who is positive has been tested. Everybody who's negative is not feeling negative because they'll be tested too early. Or they're not going to come back in and get retested when they can. Their super bowl test on Monday that's symptomatic has the symptomatic. They're negative. They're still not feeling good by Friday. They're like, I'm still dying. Let's come back and retest and they're positive. Those are just numerous people, every Johnny outside of office, not chill, that are doing the exact same thing that are not tested or not being retested. So the number is concrete for what we're seeing.
I agree.
That hundred-and-eighty-four, hundred-and-four active cases is way low compared to what it really is when you think about people who refuse to be tested.
Well, listen, I'm, and what you're saying, like, these students that are quarantined, we were discussing, they're quarantined not because they're positive in the student themselves, but because a parent and, 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 and someone, or, 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 someone in their household or they, or their indirect contact, like, say, I think my niece is every day to school and she spends three hours a week. Then she would be quarantined because I, if I test positive. But those children are not already tested. They're a bit of a quarantine time and they're going back to school because there's a lot of them that if it's someone who takes mother's school, which is going to do hours, we're going to, they're going to do their fourteen days quarantine. And that way mommy and daddy don't have to have to shut up their mouths because, I mean, I've heard it painful. I don't have to do it. Not the one, I want. I mean, that's, that's something to consider. Mommy and daddy don't get everybody tested when it's ten days if you're positive or it's fourteen if you're not. Well, that's just the weekend basically. So we're just going to not get you tested. We're not going to go on that a lot. So our, our school numbers aren't always exactly accurate in that aspect.
I, I'll speak to both sides of both of them. I work now in, I work at the nursing home and we get, as employees, we get tested weekly. We're getting tested, we're getting tested twice a week. Um, we were seeing people not test positive on Monday and come to work and then their Thursday test would not be back before the following week. And they would work almost for their entire fourteen days positive. Um, we're also seeing our residents the same way, um, not feeling well. They tested negative with the nose law. Not feeling well three days later. We finally can do a rapid test because their original test came back and they're positive and they can help in the exposure. Um, so we're seeing that. I'm seeing a medical side of things. I've also seen it on quarantine students. Like my son goes to YI. He gets home right now because somebody in his class tested positive. He has no symptoms, but he was in, just however, I mean, they're sleeping. He was in that radius. My daughter had multiple symptoms. She tested negative through contact. Her and her younger brother were both home. I kept them home. I actually kept them home today. My husband was waiting on his results. They're negative. If we go back, they can go back tomorrow. But they went home today, um, because of his test. I will, I will give a massive applause to our teachers because my nine-year-old can log in on the computer. He has learned how to get to Google Classroom. He has learned how to navigate all of those things at nine years old. I have to remind him to pay attention. I'm speaking as a parent. Uh, I took, you know, he might be sitting upside down on the computer in front of him, but he's still listening. He's like, that's why I'm listening. You know, and, uh, but he's been doing the work that was assigned him online. So I'll speak as a parent on that aspect. Our teachers have done tremendous, they've gone through tremendous efforts to make sure our kids are ready for a situation such as this. And nobody cares more about our kids than our parents, our parents. Nobody cares more about our kids than the school system and our teachers and our, our staff. And they all have done a great job of doing the very best to keep everybody safe. And I know our numbers are low. Our community numbers are high. They're going home to those community members. So I'll speak to both sides of things. Everybody, people are not being tested. They're not wanting to get that in basic tests. It hurts. It's not fun. Um, they people who work in the house and basic tests, what I work now, but if you go to the health department or you go to the doctor's office, it is, then they can test. And my daughter had a little couple of panic attacks over it. So, um, they would rather not, you know, say, get tested and just stay home. So.
Medically speaking, um, they're going to continue to grow because you're, a lot of people are testing entirely too early. The first principle, the first pop, the first horse rode, you're not going to be positive. It takes some days. Um, parent-wise, I'm very proud of our, our teachers and our staff. They've done tremendous. If my nine-year-old can navigate this and know that he needs to be somewhere at a certain time and do something, that's speaking volumes for our staff. And we're just, we've done a great job. As a parent, it's hard, especially a working parent now, now out of the house instead of working in the home. It's hard and it's going to be hard if, if it comes down to this. And so I think no answer is the right answer. And I, I, nobody's going to be happy one way or the other. Not everybody's going to be happy. There is no right answer. We are all flying by the seat of our pants. So. I know. I don't, I don't know what the right answer is either, honestly, I'm listening to all of you with an open heart. And I think our kids do need to be in school. My kids want to be in school. They want to be with their friends and their teachers and they love it. And I homeschooled for five years and I would say going back to public school was a fantastic thing. I've watched my children grow in so many ways. And I'm very thankful for that. So I, I mean, I've done all, I see all aspects, but I think our numbers are very changing. I honestly feel like they're a lot lower than what things actually are.
Okay, I'm going to play devil's advocate for just one second. Um, with the rapid testing, Melissa, since you are in the doctor's office, you're saying that a lot more. We're not doing rapid testing.
You're not doing, okay. Um, are there, aren't there a lot of false positives in their trend of seeing a lot of false positives with the rapid testing?
I don't know.
No, okay. I mean, I didn't, and I have one more thing. Um, they're quarantining the kids and they are supposed to stay at home. I get that. So in the medical facility, shouldn't maybe if they're not feeling well, maybe it should maybe, I mean, you think that would help with that too? I mean, we got, it's got to be a community thing. We can't get this thing under control just by quarantining our kids. We can't get this under control just by saying you're going virtual for two weeks because these kids are not going to stay at home. Mom and daddy's going to get tired. They're going to get out of house too because I understand my husband will not be happy. Because he's at home. I mean, I'm very blessed. I have a husband who's home with our kids. I don't have to worry about a babysitter or daycare or who's going to watch my kids. I'm blessed. I'm in the minority and I know that. But we're, we're talking about getting these kids quarantined, which we may have to do in virtual to stop some of this. But what's going to stop them from going to Walmart with their parent? They can stay home. Mom's got to go get, I mean, and you can help it. Parents have to get out and do things too. And a six-year-old can't stay home by herself. I mean, I wouldn't leave my nine-year-olds at home by themselves, probably my fourteen-year-old most time, but, you know, I mean, there's a lot of factors we do have to look at from your own perspective to our perspective, to being a parent, to being a guardian of whatever you are, to a teacher to the kids. What is best psychologically for these kids? What is best physically and emotionally for these kids? Parents, teachers, everybody. So, you know, we have to look at it and be objective and subjective back. So it, it's hard and I know I've got on a tangent here, but we do have to look at that in all ways and I mean, I mean, I agree with you on that. Great job.
Make one statement. We're not going to close because we live in virtual or traditional.
Well, when I say closed school, I mean virtual somehow. Yeah. So, well, I did, we're just like wherever it's at. I mean, I'm like, fuck. Um, but, I mean, we have a lot of factors to look at on any of it. And, I mean, it's a big deal. I'm going to say it.
I was just waiting. She was, I wasn't sure she was finished, but I, I want to speak from, from a different perspective than the K-eight schools. I'm Judy Jones and I'm principal at Clark Grange High School. And we have, however valid they are on other schools in every direction from every side, we are pretty healthy right now at Clark Grange High School. We have had eight positives since the tenth day of August. And we've had four teachers positive since the tenth day of August. So we've had twelve total positive cases. One, two, three, four of them came to us from the subway as school began. Uh, we quarantined a hundred and four people. And I, like Ernest, can't track a single positive. None of my kids have got sick. I've seen kids sicker with the flu than we've seen with any of this. But my worry this week is I have ACT, I have benchmark exams, and I have midterms. And if we close this week, we can't start our eleven-nine weeks till we come back a week and a half later and make them take midterms. That's hard.
Was that darling? She says, there we go.
I'm going to move over here so I'm distanced away from everyone because I literally can't see what I'm saying with this mask on and my glasses. But it, it will be a hardship on my students to prepare all this time and work hard and stay away from one another. We have busted. If I walk in a classroom, I've got a six-foot PVC pipe, about an inch and a half diameter, and if I open a classroom door without it, you could just see their faces off. And they're like, oh, no. And if you send home these, I've got some kids who have two or three college places and they just start bawling when you say you're going home for two weeks. And then when they go home, they've got little brothers and sisters that they've got to get logged on because mom and daddy go to work and that causes them not to be able to log into theirs. And they do have to log on on schedule at high school. They don't have a choice. Seven hours a day, I know who my kids are with. If we send them all on virtual, where are they going to be? Who are they going to be with? You know, we know what's there pretty much. I mean, respecting Melissa's, you know, medical viewpoint, there are going to be things we don't see, but that's going to be the case wherever we are. No, I'm just saying, I agree with you that things are not, there's no one hundred percent sure way of knowing anything at any given time. But I know that for probably York Institute too is probably planning midterms this week. Um, seniors have to have ACT to graduate. They didn't get to take it in the spring because the governor shut down the schools and the ACT quit testing. So, uh, we had the kids with accommodations scheduled earlier in the year. Couple of weeks ago, but the special education teacher was quarantined and so we had to reschedule. So Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday is their scheduled days to test. It's six kids. We could do that anyway. They could come in. But, uh, it's, it's an emotional thing for high school kids. It really is. Whatever decision you make, we'll live with. But I sure wish we could push through this week and see if the numbers go up from the, from the pumpkin festival or whatever. And maybe if we have to quarantine, push it down after fall break. That's just my hope. Because my kids have worked hard to stay in school and get to the point they do take their midterm exams. And I'd hate for them to have to come back ten days later and have to remember all that. That's algebra two. That's chemistry. Yes, ma'am. The regular senior class tested on October the twenty-second. Six of those seniors were quarantined at that time and couldn't test that day. Their makeup, those six kids will test tomorrow. The kids with IEPs have accommodations which makes their test last four days. And it was scheduled that week too, but miss, uh, their teacher was quarantined. So we had to reschedule. And we rescheduled for Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday back two weeks ago. And these are seniors and a couple of them are graduating in December. So this is kind of like their chance. Any questions? It is, it is a whole different problem. My worry's not so much, I do have kids who don't have food at home and who, who struggle with that, but it's not as big a problem. You know, they learn to, they learn to survive by the time I get them. And that's not my, mine is more the social, emotional. I've done all this work and now what am I going to do? That's, that's where we are.
Everybody's looking at me. I'm Jason Tompkins. I'm at York Institute. I'm the principal. Uh, I'm not here to sway you either way. I did come up here to support what these other principals were saying. We're at the high school level. It's totally different career to a degree. This week, we have five kids. It's COVID-positive. We've got roughly thirty kids. It's on the remote learning at full-time. We've got twenty-something kids. It's ongoing to them. We're, uh, we'd love to be able to push through the rest of the week. We're going to follow through with whatever you decide. So, you know, we're a different entity. It's not me to make your call whatsoever. I do know with your plan, your CLP, that's definitely with a community outbreak. Uh, our numbers do not dictate to us that we need to close. That's according to the health department. I will just give a, a quick one on that. I was trying to talk to some of the ones above us in state department about, uh, four buses per football, you know? And they said, well, do you have doctor on the end of your title for, as far as medical? And I said, no, I'm, I'm not even, I don't even have a doctor title. But, uh, they said, well, we have to follow what the health department says. And so the health department told us today that they recommend- And so the Health Department told us today that they recommend we do not close down school. That we continue to push through this week, take the week off for fall break, and see how it rolls after that. And so that's where we rest our decisions. And that's basically our answer. However, if you choose to go out this week, but you're right, you have a different decision to make, but you've gotta reflect your community and the decisions, what you think is best. Uh, you know, we're gonna follow suit with you. We are off of midterms this week. We have the ASVAB scheduled. We have Renaissance Day on Friday. We have, you know, trying to get through to the end of the nine weeks. And it's hard to stop, let's say you vote tonight, and give us to Wednesday, we probably won't be able to get our midterms in. We would not be able to get our ASVAB in, so everything's gonna have to be pushed back and try to do something with after fall break. That's not the most beneficial thing to our kids. But with that being said, I'm just here to throw my two cents in, but not really to sway you one way or the other. Thank you for that.
That's another question, where, who is it that you get your, from the Health Department that tells you you can buy some clothes?
Andy. I don't know what Andy's last name is.
Mike.
Langford, yes. And so that's who we make our decisions with.
Just, just trying to verify where information's gathered, but it might be on the state.
Any other questions?
If we close these four days, does this mean football closes, volleyball closes, Little League football closes? I mean, if it's not safe for our kids to go to school, is it safe for them to continue?
Are you asking as a York Institute question? Are you asking as a York Institute? Asking me for us? Okay, we've had that question prompted already today, and they, uh, their recommendation would be for us, we're not closing. We would not be closing based on our school numbers. Because the health of our students right now, five COVID cases, roughly twenty quarantines, not, not that high. So we would probably continue to do sports. We have four hundred and ninety-six of them. Four ninety-six.
If you went with the one percent, you're right on that, the student population.
Well, if you go with five positive instances.
Okay, so you're, you're, I've asked about, a lot of counties are doing a percentage of school population. And they would say it's like, y'all see this chart online? I don't know if y'all ever looked at the online B O E, but it's not, but it has the school number quarantined, number positive, faculty quarantined, and faculty positive, and school population. So I said, what if we went with, we change our, our poll, our plan, our reopening plan numbers to one percent of school population versus county? So we go per school. Like, Allen, if it was a one percent, they have a quarantined thirteen students, then they would close with four positive cases. So Allen would be closed, or would it be closed, there's two names. Um, you shouldn't say, and so yours would be five, so you would be with a, if, with a really close, with a one percent. They're doing ten percent, fifty percent quarantined. I'm talking quarantine numbers versus positive numbers.
So I'm gonna have to give credit to, uh, Mr. William Milbury. With our dashboard, as Sierra's talking about, um, we have, uh, numbers. But what you don't see is the backside of that, that he be all very labor intensive, and again, kudos to him. Um, we are tracking that data every single day, and I'll pass you out a paper pack, and it's coming around to you. And so we can look at this, and I know it's probably very hard for you to see this, so I'm gonna kind of try to explain it to you. So this is Allen Elementary School, and on our chart, from the beginning of school of eight seventeen, we can tell where it's peaking. And if we look at our vertical line, this is number of cases. And the blue line represents quarantine or direct exposure with students. Uh, we do have red lines for positive cases, um, and then yellow line for quarantine for faculty and staff, and then green is positive cases, faculty and staff. So you can see at the beginning of the school, they were doing relatively fine right now. Their, uh, quarantine or direct exposure of students is way up, getting close to sixty kids, and that's what's reflected on the dashboard. I think it's fifty, you know? Then, if we go on, and we see Clark Grange High School. When we first started, I think Miss Judy will attest to, they had a rough start. We finally got our kids back in school, and they're doing quite well now, looking at this trends and projections. We have Pine Haven Elementary, as Ms. Sherry spoke, they have had a lot throughout the process that have been in quarantine or isolation, uh, and some positive cases there as well. South Ventress has had some very high numbers as well. Um, and then York Elementary had a, had a spark there, you can see theirs. But then I wanna get on back to, this is what Ms. Sierra was speaking of, here's our dashboard. So you can see right now that a hundred and fifty-nine students have been quarantined right now currently, uh, because of direct exposure. We only have three positive students in the county. We have eight quarantine staff and two positive staff. This is the backside that you're not seeing, this doesn't break down of each school. So with each school, right now, it's showing us that Allen Elementary has fifteen percent out due to quarantine or direct exposure. Clark Grange High School only has two percent of their student population out. Pine Haven, four percent, South Ventress, nine percent, and York Elementary, three percent. And then here is stat in cases. So again, you don't see that on the front side when you just look at the dashboard, but we are tracking that, and we'll have a record of every single day, so we can look at where there's peaks. Or we can quickly look and say, hey, this school has reached that fifteen percent threshold, or, uh, is nearing it. So this is very useful data that we could use if we do want to revise the CLP, so that we can differentiate by schools and school needs with case counts or quarantine counts.
Now, one of the, one of the pictures comes back.
One of the pictures comes back tomorrow.
So then you'll just have one positive, right?
She was a positive.
About five, you'll have thirty-two kids back there.
And that's what we're saying at Pine Haven a lot. I mean, you know, I'm gonna be up in the sixties, and over forty-four days, stay in time, but I may get thirty, thirty kids come back. And then like today, I have four kids that just, they're just calling in, so who knows, they're not keeping, that was a concern, are they keeping it from us or not? Most parents are calling in and saying, hey, my husband tested positive, or I tested positive, I kept my kids home, we give them the quarantine days. Somebody comes and picks up all their material, and they're home for twenty-four days. So I have several kids out of that twenty-four that I'd say ten or twelve out of twenty-four that I have out right now won't come back until the end of October. I'm a common, I'm a twenty-seven, I'm alive. So unless they end up testing positive, and then we change the quarantine days, then you're up to be back.
One thing that I wanna add, uh, Chris, go back to the individual school charts. If you notice on that, at the, at the first of the school year, that, I think it was the seventeenth to the fifteenth, I think, is when we started tracking that. So that first peak is fourteen, or well, twelve to fifteen days after school start, and things leveled back out. The second peak that you're seeing on each individual school, just, just to take a pick on schools, is after late night. So after we went to a holiday or gathering, right now, which was the pumpkin festival, you're probably gonna see that upward trend take place in that quarantine kid, positive kid, whatever. Probably the week after, we can back. My, my, whatever, whatever y'all decide to do, um, is, I, I just wanna say, whatever y'all decide to do, I expect it. I see both sides of the picture as, as administrator and as parents, as did in school, um, right now. That, it, you know, it, it's really troublesome to try to pick whether to shut down or not. But you're, you're probably gonna see better numbers, even though they may be skewed, as we talked about, after fall break. So whatever y'all decide to do. Put it out there, that number's uncrucial, that execution, county offices, uncrucial, it is every day. But I think, get your best judgment, and if you shut down, or go virtual, I would say, would be after fall break. If we do, if we decide to go virtual, we all kind of, I mean, it's a whole, yeah, it's a whole situation. I mean, here's the number bar right now, but I think, yes.
How would it be if we set off, uh, we say, oh, versus we go fall break, and then take another week off, and that don't end the year? Say, we could, if we go archer, and after fall break, that kills, it's a, so, it doesn't, tack on that, you, you. Uh, I'm, I'm, you, you wanna just take the week off? Yeah, you can, you could go this week, I'm all right with that. You could go to, you could, that's, that's, use some of your stockpile days. That's one thing that we talked to Dr. Miller about, because I tell him, we're turning out more football players with the buses.
Use a stockpile day, and, you know, let people out early, so they can, they're going to thank the Mount Juliet this, this week, you know? And they said the state didn't want them to do that, so I don't know how they're gonna get four or five buses to take them to a ballgame. But, uh, you do have the use of your stockpile days, or, but, you know, the state intends, you know, like with the learning plan, if, if you do go virtual, anytime you don't lose days, they, they count as a daytime. But, uh, you know, if you choose to do that, you can either use stockpile days, which we normally, you know, have that bad weather, we, we use most of those, and we could, uh, make a change to the calendar, and, uh, you know, I don't know what that would be, you know, with, at, at the end of the year, or, uh, not take a spring break. But I know right now, the teachers and the students need a break. They definitely need a break right now.
When I come here, I was like, Bill, I wanna just take off and shut it down. You have to listen to them, you're gonna have to wait.
Well, you know, a lot of times when we're out for snow, and it clears up, and I go back to school on Friday, and people say, why didn't you take a long break? I know that those kids will get fed that day, and I know that they, like, uh, the Harvest Ministries, they send food home on Friday to a lot of kids that they don't normally have. So that plays a big part in, uh, in what we do, but we do know that they're safe when they're at school, and, uh, we don't necessarily, now, some of them doesn't come from the best of home situations. We usually gauge it around twenty percent, and, uh... Yeah, yeah. But, uh, I would like to see our CLP changed per school level at quarantine and, uh, and positive cases to be around fifteen percent, where you can target schools to do that. When we did this CLP this summer, we had about three weeks to do it in, and we rec, we did what the state recommended. We had twenty-two cases, active cases in the county. We didn't expect the numbers to blow up like they blew it up. And whether accurate or not, they're reported to Health Department. And it looks really bad that we have that many for such a small county. But we don't have bad numbers in the schools, which is attributed to our staff and, and principals and, uh, teachers. Why? It's, yeah, I'm sorry, but, um, you know, we followed the, the Health Department guidelines, I guess. They get tired of me calling them, or Debbie calling them, and going out and measuring, and, and, and we've done some good things, I think, with, uh... We started going back in the schools last week and look how they seat children, you know, maybe sit them instead of in aisles, sit them in quads, where we don't have to quarantine as many kids. But I, I will say, they, the, uh, administrators have done a really good job with all this, and, uh, it couldn't have been a whole lot worse. And I know, you know, there's certain things like buses, we can't help, because we have so many kids on buses. But, uh, Stephen, did you, did you wanna talk?
I'm Stephen Smith, principal at York Elementary. Uh, just wanna take a segment, uh, we started a program with SEL, which is Social Emotional Learning, and we start the day off with questions, and, uh, teachers get the kids in circles and, and just kinda see how their day is going, and if they have anything to talk about. And that is a big support for them. I know that over the last couple of weeks, we've dealt with some home situations, just because friends have come and told what other friends have told them, uh, which I don't think would have happened if we had been quarantined, or school was out, or whatever. So, uh, I can just throw in my opinion, and, and, you know, as many of my teachers have said, let's be in school, kids are happy to be here, uh, teachers are happy to be here, and just go for as long as we possibly can. So, uh, that's all I have to add at this point.
I have a angry question. Is there a way, on the virtual morning, to... And I'm angry in this area, but is there a way to record the teachers, to where if a child has to go to a grandparent for the day, they need to record? So they could watch it later in the evening and still get their work done? Okay. Um, that was my biggest comment.
I've seen computers sitting on a mat before, and I've seen it, and on the computers, they need to be here the whole class.
I mean, again, I've seen computers sitting on laptops, while the computers were on, they don't have that quick, but they're seeing. But they're still at this minute and being, you know, I have a question, and, uh, if you keep having, or, you know, or, here.
There it says ninety percent goal. A couple of years ago, we started our reading initiative and what we wanted, we wanted ninety percent for third grade reading at grade level at the end of the initiative. Uh, it was a very aggressive goal, one that we, we strived hard. So you'll still, you'll see that a lot on our PowerPoints. That was our, our goal. And as you'll notice, uh, some of our classrooms have met that this year. Uh, first grade and the school in the reading seventy-nine percent at grade level, district sixty-five. In the math, we had eighty-two percent at grade level and the district was seventy-three. So those are good numbers. Uh, second grade. Now this is all the second grade, okay? And all second grade at alert. On the reading, seventy-one percent and the district fifty-six, so still ahead of the district. In the math, we hit, there it is, ninety percent. We hit the ninety percent goal in math and the district is sixty-three. Had one second grade, I didn't put this on the celebration slide, has, but one second grade class in math is one hundred percent. So I think that's the first time we've done that. Okay. Uh, third grade, on the reading, school's, uh, seventy-four, district fifty-six. Math fifty-nine and the district fifty-two. Uh, third grade math teacher, she was quarantined for a while during this too. So that's why we see a little bit of decrease in the number. Uh, fourth grade, school seventy-one percent, district sixty-eight, we're still just a little above the district. In math, seventy-four percent and district fifty-five. So doing quite well there in math in fourth grade. Fifth grade, uh, the school, there is again, the ninety percent goal in reading in fifth grade, so we were real proud of that. And the district sixty-six. Math seventy-three percent and the district fifty-one. Uh, sixth grade. Notice the sixth grade reading, we surpassed that ninety percent goal, we hit ninety-two percent. And the district seventy-five. In the math, school sixty-five percent and district fifty-two. Still pretty good numbers there in math. Seventh grade, on the reading, seventy-eight percent at grade, at grade level. Sixty-nine was the benchmark for the district. And in math, we had seventy-three percent and the district is fifty-seven. Still pretty good numbers. Eighth grade. Uh, the reading is eighty-four percent. Same lady does seventh grade and eighth grade reading, so she, it, it looks this way every year. She comes in with a seventh grade, wonder what am I going to do? And then she, she's competing against her seventh when she gets to eighth grade. So we have eighty-four percent on the school. And then the math, sixty percent and district fifty-six. Next steps, celebration. All grade levels above the district in math and reading. Another celebration, second grade math, fifth grade reading, sixth grade reading reached our ninety percent goal. Another celebration, a first grade classroom. Now, I said, I told you we had one second grade classroom that was one hundred percent. I didn't include that on the slide, but I have this one, a first grade classroom at ninety-four percent, both in reading and math. That's only one student, not a grade level. Our goal is because of the high number of students in and out of quarantine, we will maintain and, and improve our growth. Uh, that's going to be a challenge because we're so high at the beginning here, so we're going to have to show growth when we get to spring. So we're up to it though. Uh, we will continue to have high expectations for students and teachers and maintain COVID-19 protocols. Any questions? Thank you.
Is your, Ms. Linda? Uh, like Mr. Campbell said, this math test, we'll give this math test three times this year. Normally we give it within the first twelve or thirteen days of school. This year, matter of fact, closing October the first day, it was less than we could give it. I think Pine Haven did not test eight kids because of quarantine reasons. And, uh, we had two virtual kids that did not test. And then we had one virtual child that tested in reading, but didn't come back and tested math. So I thought because of our quarantine numbers in and out, we've done a good job of getting everybody tested, but eight kids. Um, you'll see results by grade level. Normally you see results, we base our results based on what my first grade did last spring as kindergarten students. Norms changed this year, NWEA read normed this year. And because we didn't test in the spring because we were out. So that's the reason you're not seeing our comparison from spring to fall. Uh, I've already said that normally we test within the first couple of weeks of school. This year, we've just now finished testing and the norms did change. Uh, kindergarten, sixty-seven percent at Pine Haven in reading, sixty-eight percent as a district. Math, we were at eighty-four percent and the district was at eighty-two percent. Kept going back and forth to me, if any of you walked over here last year and remember our kindergarten numbers last year, they were terribly low. I mean, they were very low. It's the first time since we've been giving math, math, we've seen numbers like that. So this year, I was like, man, for us to be out from March until now and numbers are this high, I thought that was a good job for the county and the schools. First grade, fifty-four percent, sixty-five percent for reading. School and math was seventy-one percent, the district was seventy-three percent. You'll see my, my last slide, a lot of my concerns was I've had a lot of teachers quarantined. So all three of my first grade teachers have been quarantined anywhere from ten to fourteen days through this time. So they've missed quite a bit of time. They taught from home, but it's still not been the same as sitting in the classroom with your kids. We had a sub in the classroom, Ms. Dawn and Ms. Melissa Harding, which is new to first grade this year, remotely came into the classroom through their computer, taught from home to those kids sitting in the classroom. And then Ms. Courtney taught her kids at home, from her home. Uh, second grade, fifty-one percent in the school, fifty-six percent in the district in reading, sixty-one percent in math, sixty-three percent in the district. Had a whole second grade classroom go home. They taught from home, but that was fourteen days, those kids were out. And the teachers were teaching from home. Uh, third grade, fifty-six percent, we were right at the district in the reading and math, fifty to fifty-two percent. So we're right, I think third grade is a hard grade, but I think that's something we need to focus on all over the county by looking at the numbers and Pine Haven numbers. Fourth grade, seventy-two percent in reading at Pine Haven, sixty-eight percent in the district. In the maths, Pine Haven was at fifty-six percent, the district at fifty-five percent. Fifth grade, we were at fifty percent in the school and sixty-six percent in the district, forty-eight percent in math, fifty-one percent in the district. Uh, Ms. Jamie Jeffers was out of school twenty-four days. She was quarantined twenty-four days. I'm not saying that's a result of it, but I'm not saying it's not either. I mean, I just don't know. And then math, Ms. Beth Bating went to seventh and eighth grade social studies. We have a new math teacher, which has just been, Beth's been about a month, five weeks in the classroom with this class, teaching math. And then we've had a new teacher come in because Cammy Cherry is one of the teachers that went to be a virtual teacher. So I've moved some people within the school year. Sixth grade, seventy-eight percent at Pine Haven in reading, seventy-five percent in the district, uh, fifty-three percent in the school, fifty-two percent in the district. About the same numbers in the school and the district, but they were both good. One of the things I am noticing, if you look at all the district numbers, most district, I don't know that there was a district number over, I mean, under fifty percent. That's good. Uh, seventh grade, seventy percent, sixty-nine percent, basically in reading, same number. Uh, forty-one percent in seventh grade math, fifty-seven percent as a district. So we really need to get in there and help Ms. Letitia and kind of look and see, you know, I know that she was out because of me. When I tested positive, I sent through my teachers home because of an IEP meeting, so they were out fourteen days. Uh, eighth grade, sixty-four percent, seventy-one percent, fifty-two and fifty-six percent in math. Uh, they're above the fifty percent, but... And then some concerns I had, I talked about our teachers that was being quarantined. Mr. Bever and I were sitting there today and we talked about fourth grade, what other grade? Kindergarten, kindergarten and fourth grade are the only two grades that have not had teachers being quarantined at Pine Haven. Next steps, we're making sure that our groups, our desks are six foot apart. You know, we're trying to focus on maintaining those high expectations and following those COVID protocols. And I have two classrooms in seventh and eighth grade that use tables for groups. So we're putting desks in those rooms to make sure that those kids are six foot apart. And, uh, we're just going to continue to do our walkthroughs and focus on feedback for evaluations. Any questions?
Uh, I would like to brag a little bit before we get started. And Ms. Christie, you may think that if I'm not telling this right, but I have three teachers at my school who got chosen to record remotely through Eureka. It's a grant, okay? And those teachers are Ms. Shane Crockett, who's, uh, making videos for first grade. Uh, Ms. Sarah Wright, who's doing second grade. And Ms. Michelle York, who's recording for fourth grade. And what this is, it's for the state. They're sending them out and they're on the wheel, correct? And, uh, other teachers are going to be able to, to use their teaching and, and they're working really hard on that. Okay. Our kindergarten at our school is at sixty-seven percent. The district is at sixty-eight. Our math is at seventy-eight and the district is at eighty-two. First grade, our reading is at seventy-four, the district is at sixty-five. Our math is at seventy-eight and the district is seventy-three. Second grade, we have four teachers this year. Two of those are, one is brand new to second grade and the other one is, uh, she taught until March of last year. She's brand new. So we've got two that are learning their ways. But reading, we have a fifty-six and the district a fifty-six, so I thought that was good. Our math is a little down at fifty-seven and the district at sixty-three. Our third grade, uh, reading is at forty-seven and our district is at fifty-six. Our school, uh, for math is at fifty-four and the district is fifty-two. And I do have some teachers that I think are struggling a little bit with the reading program. Our fourth grade, uh, our school reading is at seventy-one, our district at sixty-eight, somewhere above. In math, we're right with the district at fifty-five percent. Fifth grade started all sort of rocky the very first few weeks of school. Uh, they had quite a few of those students that were quarantined and, uh, just had a bad start. School was at fifty-nine, our district's at sixty-six. Our math for fifth grade is at forty-one and our district is at fifty-one. Sixth grade, uh, ELA at sixty-eight percent, our district is at seventy-five. Our math is forty-seven at fifty-two and our math teacher was out for three weeks because she had to have surgery. Then one of the classes, all but I think about six kids, uh, were quarantined, so their data was not included because they didn't get to take the test. And that's very unusual for our math to do that well. Uh, seventh grade, uh, reading is at sixty-eight percent and the district at sixty-nine. Our school math is at sixty-six and our district is fifty-seven. And what we did this year, we had two seventh grade teachers and two eighth, and instead of them having to teach two subjects, uh, they combined with eighth grade teachers. So Mr. Pat teaches, uh, seventh and eighth grade ELA. Ms. Cassandra Anderson does our math for seventh and eighth. Uh, Ms. Sabina, who's a, who's one of our new teachers, teaches, uh, so, social studies. And Ms. Courtney Atkinson does the science for both grades. Eighth grade, uh, our reading was at seventy percent, the district was at seventy-one. Our math again was at sixty and the district was at fifty-six. Okay, our first grade reading and math was both above the district. Our second grade is consistent with the district in reading and, uh, I believe math was mistaken on that. Our third, seventh and eighth grade math is higher than the district with fourth grade reading higher than the district and math is consistent with the district. So there's some toughos in math. What we want to try to do is work with our fifth grade math teacher and help him to improve by having this Rhonda, Ms. Dale and Mr. Crouch come in there, uh, and help, give him some ideals and for Christie and I to, uh, work a little closer with him too. Do you all have any questions? We would like to invite you all to come out anytime, wear your mask and a social distancing and just visit our school.
We have a couple of policies for, we're, uh, deleting, uh, policy four point two oh three, uh, advanced college placement policy recommendation by T S B A. We have a revision of enrollment for college level courses, a revision of our drug and alcohol testing for policy for employees, revision of our alternative education policy and revision, this is due to state law, the child abuse report, reported. Also under monitoring, we, uh, got those bids open Friday. And, uh, we had a bid for the parking lot at Pine Haven and a park and one for the driveway, the road out there. Uh, Robert and I had met with the engineer and, uh, Mr. McCoy who built it. And they recommended that we let it settle. I also talked to, uh, Frankie Campbell, who's a civil engineer and, and works, retired from the State Highway Department. That's what he recommended, the man that, uh, from Rogers Creek thought it would be all right to pave, so that will be, uh, be y'all's decision. Uh, the rest, we have, uh, some federal budget amendments. We do have, uh, we're going to have, as we go through this, every, every, uh, every meeting, we'll probably have some, uh, federal budget amendments to do as, as we get through this. Uh, I'll let Ms. Christie explain the federal ones and then, uh, our finance guy from the state notified us last week that we have to, uh, reduce our GP budget amount in this because we, our budget won't download in the E plan, so we're pretty much going to have to do this. And then we have, uh, the last item on the agenda are the, uh, consideration of the MOU and I think they've pretty much wore that out and everybody's tired of fooling with it. So I'd ask for y'all to pass that. Christie, do you want to say anything about the federal budget amendments? And I'm mosey down there with the microphone. Then we can probably get into our meeting.
Two different amendments, actually, the first and I want to mention is the reopening, uh, grant budget setup. So once our C O P was approved officially, uh, every system was open to this grant and it was based on your number of enrollment from last fiscal year. So basically we received sixty thousand dollars. Uh, it did have to be aligned to the C O P as far as, uh, section three, which is academics, section five, which is virtual and section seven, I think. So on the back sheet of your reopening grant setup, you can see what we're spending that money on. Um, I will say kudos again to the county for the two hundred and seventy-three thousand, uh, that we were able to spend for virtual learning and we're going to take advantage of all of that. And then here is additional funds that are flowing back into the system. Any questions on the reopening grant? The next one is a budget amendment that is for the remote learning technology grant. This was the grant that the state was reimbursing for devices and they were reimbursing for every three that you purchased, they would pay for one. And we were supposed to get two hundred dollars for that reimbursement. We found out last week in our notification letter that they increased that amount to, I believe, three hundred and twenty-one dollars, thirty-four cents per device that they reimbursed. And they did include the K two as well. So we ended up getting a total of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-three that is falling back into the system through this grant. And we had expected only to get eighty-six thousand. Total coming back in is a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty cents. Okay, so with the three five devices, originally we had that in the S R funds and that's what you're calling COVID money, I believe, Mr. Arlene. Um, those are now being paid for by the county funds that county government gave us for reimbursement. So that did not cost the system and what we charged the county was less the reimbursement amount that we're getting back. Okay? So we did have to pay for it. And then the second amount for the K two devices, we did pay for those actually out of Title I funds rather than S R funds.
So that letter hasn't been provided since previously and used in another third?
Correct.
And we know yet where we plan on using it?
Are you asking for the one hundred and thirty-nine thousand that's coming back into the system?
Yes, ma'am.
No, that line? No.
All right, any other discussion before we toss a leak to order?
Uh, I have a few questions, but, um, in discussion about when the school's back, I would ask, and what are we looking at?
We have a microphone.
I'm pretty loud. I don't know if I'm in my... I think I'm pretty loud. Um, where are we at? Are we opening ourselves up to judicial lawsuits as a board? But because we have a, a real complaint submitted to state and it's worth not following. I mean, we, we don't follow the national grant now based on what I saw. I didn't even realize until today, I was reading, I threw it, that we were at, we hit ninety, which would have put us at our closest school, clean reopening twenty-four hours. We hit that September eighteenth. So are, I, I'm just looking at from a legal standpoint, are we, are there any kind of legal liability here if we stay open?
So with no guarantee under any circumstance that you have...
What, what do you answer, Mr. Brown?
I, I do think that the best way to follow the plan is to let it. If you not follow the plan, it's exactly to the letter at this point, that's true. I would say it doesn't matter if you should follow the plan now. Uh, and I think that, uh, what, what we've tried to do, what, uh, Director Jones is doing today when he contacted the Department of Health, if you notice in the plan on page two, uh, the first paragraph, it says, once certain levels are triggered in the plan, that you're to reach out to Department of Health for guidelines. And so he, that's, that's part of the plan and he reached out today and got those guidelines. It doesn't say that the moment that you strike a certain number, that you have to immediately shut it to schools. It says you have to reach out to Department of Health for guidelines and then make the determination whether you want to implement the moderate plan if you're in the middle or the high risk plan, which is sort of where we are right now. So, uh, I think any department's plan, obviously exposed, you can some liability. The legislature has, has taken action to try to protect people from that. However, I think it's always the best practice and good sound legal advice that if you have passed this plan, which is a piece of legislation, to follow that plan to the letter as close as you possibly can. If you choose that you want to deviate from the plan, I would recommend that you pass that by a vote in front of the entire board. I would also advise you to do that after you receive guidance from the Department of Health in write, uh, in writing.
So do we have, any other items from the Department of Health?
That we get through this week and distribute to devices, notify parents of the, uh, quarantine because Eddie, like most other people, was concerned about inflated numbers coming from activities this weekend. That we, this is what he recommended to me. Uh, Danny, were you in there when I talked to him? Sandy was. We, he was on the beach. And, uh, he recommended that we get through this week, give out the devices, take file break and then go virtual the next week. And that would be the fourteen day. Uh, but we'll...
I'd like to say something to the committee members when I can go in. You're good, don't be gone.
Bring the light.
Well, if he was too ill to teach, he could have taken his 10 COVID days that he wouldn't require to teach in my plan. Well, let me finish. That was in the policy that we passed. As far as getting to the threshold, we didn't go over 1% until Saturday, when we jumped 34 active cases in the county. We have to be in a very active area where the numbers in the schools are good, the numbers in the county are overwhelmingly bad. The numbers in the schools are quite well. But if he was too ill to teach, he could have taken his 10 COVID days as other teachers have had, who have had that and been sick. They could have taken their 10 days. And we would have made other arrangements for him to do that. He didn't have to, to teach when he was ill. Now, I know it's not, but he could have taken that. But we didn't reach that 1% totally until this weekend, when Ms. Sierra called me and we jumped 20 cases Saturday. We jumped seven more yesterday, and we jumped seven more today. We went up 34 active cases in three days. Which put us at 1.1% of the total population of the county.
I, I will say, the reason I asked this is, I was, I was reading this scenario. Can y'all hear me? I'm pretty loud. Okay, so I, I was rereading this because in my head, I had the 1% of 18,000. So in my head, I was focusing on, like, when we get to 180, then we gotta work. I, I was not, I was just, I would have this until, when did, I was, we had this in our board packet last night, so it's the 14th of September. But it says that we hit, we were a half a percent to a 1%. We were supposed, if we followed this, we were to go virtual learning, 3 through 12. And schools will close temporarily 24 hours to allow disinfecting. And then pre-K through second, we'll return back to school. I thought it was 1%. I wasn't reading, this was like a half a percent to a 1%. So that was actually when we were at 90, which I had to go back and research to figure out when we hit that, which is why I said September 18th. That wasn't what we had talked about this, whatever I called you on Saturday. Because I was, in my head, it was up to 1%. Then we had to worry about closing, which I think a lot of people had that 180 in their head, like I did. That was the number I was concerned with. So I'm just, the reason I was asking is, like, since we've hit this and we didn't close or anything, I just wanted to know where we're at legally. Because if a kid, I don't want, I'm a parent, so I don't want to close because I have to take my son to work every day. He's gonna have to set him up on a desk right beside me. I'm gonna have to make sure he's logged in while mom is over here and gotta answer the phone and run this company and do this and do these numbers. So it's gonna be hard on me as a parent. So I'm, I have to look at this from both aspects. But if this is our standard right now, do we not have to follow this and then us make a new standard? I mean, I understand, I don't like it from the numbers, but. That's what I'm saying. Can't, but can we make that decision tonight, Gary?
You can change the CLP from county numbers to school numbers. That's what I said at the beginning. You can do that at the board now.
Okay, what I'm asking, though, I understand. But what I'm asking is, we sent this to state for a reopening plan. So what I'm asking is, do we not have to follow this and then make a new plan, send that to the state for approval? Is that not part of it and then go from there? Or do we, I don't, I don't know. I don't know where we're at. So I just want to know where we stand. Okay.
And I didn't want to bring any changes until I followed before you.
Right. Okay, so we, so we can change this tonight and then we're fine? We don't have to get state approval? We don't have to vote a change tonight and then get state approval? And then it take effect whenever that comes back?
I would get, I would get the Department of Health and see what changes they recommended.
Can you hear that? I'll check the microphone away. And it says that we need to get, everyone want to read this. We need to get state approval on whatever changes. And from, well, state is, state health department, approval in writing.
Yeah, I didn't ask him that. He called me back and he said that he had a school where he had several quarantine in the school. And he was going, going to do those kids virtual. I think he was gonna start it after their break, it's the same as ours. I know that, you know, it got all in Marion County. And we have to send those things in. Most of the time, when you send it in, it's approved. But we did consult with the Health Department. Andy is over several counties. Danny, I don't know who is his second in command. Do you? I, I really don't know. But we were just lucky that he answered the phone today. But. I will, I will reach out to him in the morning. I will do that. I'll text him tonight. I will text him tonight. But. But Christie, most of the time when we send those things in, there, there's not any problem with getting them approved. And there was some stuff in the legislative legislature this past year when they come back in June that relays some liability on schools. For, yeah.
... Has to be something inside or, you know, some sort of growth mapping, something where you made a decision and light up having other information where you knew. The problem is when you have a plan and your partner's in that plan, then I think you open the door a little bit to that sort of an argument. So, I think that you'll be fine as long as you start pushing forward with Department of Health and get the guys on what you guys need to do and then you do it. And make your own plan from there.
The legislation, county planning, the state, their plans too.
That's exactly right.
My question is this was created vote in all and board approved prior to our election. So, where is this standing? I mean, if we're, if we really have to...
Sure. If we have to go by this because this was board approved prior to this board, this was the previous board. Okay. Oh, no, no, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that. I'm saying this is what, this is what was approved. This is the plan that was put in place saying that the scenario two, which was point five percent of the county, which was ninety active cases that three through twelve was supposed to go online for two weeks. That was several weeks ago. And now we're over the one percent and it's, all students are supposed to go virtual at this point. My question is, you're saying we can make a vote to change this. Can we legally do that without the Department of Health signature, you know, statement and the state board?
You can legally vote to change it.
Okay.
If you're changing it to something that you don't have some sort of case or a treaty or a line or a foundation for change, then you're just sort of gesticating and you're taking it all the time. And actually, this is very important. You've got your guys and you've got some smart folks sitting up here. But I think in the name of the medical league, you need the advice of that legislature under the venue of six. So when you get that advice, then you can change that. That thing is set in stone. It's a party. The board has to vote to change it. But since the board, the board votes to change it, that's awesome.
But we can't vote to change it. You're saying, you're recommending that we have something during this day.
I recommend it.
So, since we don't have that this evening, we don't have anything to add in. And we are over the one point one percent.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a great discussion. And I think that the plan is already, it does say, should have been immediately like it says, you have to contact the Department of Health and you have to follow their advice. But it's nothing that may be in case it has happened. If they take, they have to come up with a plan for inside of the framework of that rate law.
Okay.
And I think that's what's happening.
So...
If you got something to change that, then it's good. But you need to do it all, all of the advice.
Can I, I'm gonna chime in again. Um, I don't understand. We're just gonna be talking about this the whole time. So I'm, I'm, I'm kind of over it a little lot. But, I mean, it's, our lives are concerned. But how could it be? Let's just work it on for another thirty hours. What, what I'm hearing is basically, if, if we continue this week, cut a week off for our fall break, go send everything home, but not send it on Friday. Go virtual.
Week after fall break. Loud enough. I really don't need a microphone, but, um, but if we send everything home on Friday in order to be virtual, take our week off for fall break, the following week we're virtual in that time span, give our administration time to revise this so that we could make it more health official, coordinated to where it comes back, we could do an emergency board meeting. I'm throwing out this out here. Somebody can chime in in a minute. Uh, but to where they could come back and say, okay, so let's break this down to say, I mean, I would like to see it as two percent of the school population. That's just my thoughts. Because if you take two percent of the school population, test positive, then Alex wouldn't close until they had eight positive cases. Clark Rains wouldn't close until they had six positive cases. Pine Haven wouldn't close until they had ten positive cases. South Ventures would be twelve positive cases. York Elementary would be eight. I mean, these are, this is, my thought process today is we follow the plan that was put in place on August third, and then we have them come back with a new amendment that says that we switch to scenario two when we hit all those numbers. When any school has hit that number, then they follow scenario two. And then when, you know, all schools have hit it, then we hit scenario three. I mean, I, I'm throwing out an idea, but I would like to see that as an option for a revised plan. But until then, I feel like we have this. We haven't had any medical advice in writing that says, don't follow it. So I think we need to follow this and go virtual starting the following Monday. Does that make sense? But how, I mean, how do we send our stuff home? I don't, I mean, I don't know how we get our stuff to teach to our students, because otherwise we're gonna have a mess just like we did in March. Because it was awful for these teachers. I mean, principals, I love you and I'm glad you're here and I'm not bad enough, but it ain't really on you. We're putting it on all of our teachers that you're over. Those are the ones that have to meet the parents at McDonald's and Derek Queen and Walmart at eight and ten o'clock at night to give them the prom books and the books or their packets, because they care enough about their students that they're gonna do it. And I care enough about my kid that I'm gonna do it. As soon as I get a chance off work, I'm going to wherever I need to be. So those are the teachers, those are the ones hurting worse than you are, no offense, but that's, that's who it goes down to. Linda Shaker, her head, Cherry Shaker, her head, everybody knows, I mean. It's our teachers that we don't want to put on. But we, we don't have any medical advice, is what I'm saying.
I'd like to say something, please. That we need to remember that this is a plan, not a bona fide policy. Uh, we do have to notify the state with whatever we come up with, but the governor issued a notice that he leaves the numbers of what we choose and how we pick and how we go back to the individual districts. So yes, we in fact can change this plan to whatever we want. We just have to notify the state.
We can do that with a vote tonight.
Exactly. We can do that with a vote right now.
As far as the previous plan, it was one and a half percent to one percent, and we hit the one percent Saturday. I'm gonna say one thing, then we'll get on with the meeting. Oh, the reason I brought up this CLP is changes tonight. And they've been questions asked about his validity as far as the state is, as far as the state is sold for. There's other counties that have done this. Now, this COVID deal is a new deal for us. It's a new deal for everybody. The plan was put in place subject to changes, changes came about in the system. Who knew in March that, sitting here tonight, that we'd be number one or two in the state of Tennessee as far as COVID in the county? We're number one or two. We didn't know that. But as far as the CLP, Oldham County does what I'm talking about, Knox County does, Hamilton County does, there's several counties in the state of Tennessee that does this. And it seems to work on this thirteen, fifteen percent zone. It's got even twenty percent, okay? So, we have a plan, and I agree with you, oh, yeah, we have a plan, and it, the plan went over on Saturday, and so, and technically, we should have went with that plan like our attorney said, and closed through probably today. We should have done it, but we did. So we're sitting here tonight. And the thing about it is, we've gotta come up with a different plan or go with the one we've got. Which would close it down and go, we've heard all these people talk here tonight, and they've had their concerns said uh, about what it would do to our system to close it down. The problem that we did not realize at the beginning, whenever we set that plan, we went with a county plan instead of a school plan. That was a whole issue that we had to deal with. So tonight, I would ask you, whenever we get to other business, to really consider this CLP change. We need to change that tonight and make it more realistic, so we can continue to have those kids in school if all possible.
And the only system, the only school we have that's in trouble is Alice, and everyone gets thirty some kids back, right?
Exactly. Exactly. I don't think there'll be a problem with the state of Tennessee Department of Health because other schools have already done it, okay? We're not reinventing the wheel. We're just taking what other folks have already done or already doing, and we're putting, we're adhering it to our system here in Tennessee County, is what we're doing. That's all we're doing. We're not making, we're not reinventing the wheel. Like I said, we're just doing it. If Oldham County's doing it, Knox County and all these other counties are just got to be on Tennessee State. But that don't denote that the issue that we need to send this to the state, once we do it tonight, if Mr., if a local guy's on vacation, they can't get a hold of him, I'm sure it can't be our school board attorney, not state. In Nashville, they'll get this foundation value back to Tennessee County. That shouldn't be a problem at all. So in saying that, I appreciate that you listened to me. We'll go ahead and get our meeting started. I order if you would, call roll.
Karen Cooper and Nikki Bowles, Darlene Brennan,
Darlene's here. She's muted.
Sierra, Felicia Garrett, Bill Cody, Eddie Cook, Melissa Brenstetter, Kathy Williams, Gary Peters.
All right. First order of business is reading the last meeting minutes. Y'all have that in your packet and, uh, we've got a motion from Ms. Cooper to approve. Got here a second. Got a second from Ms. Hull. All the favors say aye. Holes likewise. Ayes had it.
Last one's spoken.
Ma'am?
I'm on Sierra Hull. I will say my good.
All right. The directors report. You've, you've got that in your packet as well. Uh, is anybody got any questions on the director report? If not, do I hear a motion to accept? We don't have to do that. We don't have to do that. Let's pass that all up. I just want to know if anybody had any questions. All right. The next order being is consideration of out of state trip for park rates high school radar competition.
I make the motion that we allow the, uh, RTC for the rifle and the radar.
Here, I've got a motion on the floor, and I've got a second. A motion of Ms. Cooper, a second by Ms. Williams. Is there any discussion?
The surveying is, is the concern about getting voted across the state line.
We don't have a concern, but...
Do you remain out of concern, Rowan? Yes, so we need to tell them that that is a problem.
We might tell them something, but that doesn't bring you back.
The last message we had in Kentucky, we weren't allowed to go because we weren't a board of state, board of county in Kentucky, so we got canceled in Kentucky. I don't know where those are, but I know Kentucky didn't let us come because we didn't board with the state. This is Flint County, and we, that's why I, that might be a different thing.
Okay.
Not on the radar.
Ms. Cooper, would you change the motion to state that if there's no restrictions? Would you second that this week? All right, we've got amendments to the motion. There is a motion made, a second. There's laws, there's no restrictions, none of the processes in the state line. All the favors say aye. Holes likewise. Ayes had it. All right. The next thing is consideration of red leach and lowering schools' stadiums. Got a motion of Ms. Cooper. Got here a second. Got a second by Ms. Felicia. Any discussion? All the favors say aye. Holes likewise. All right. The next one is consideration to delete advanced college placement policy number four, dot zero two three, two oh three. This is...
These are policy revisions from TSVA.
Yes, they are according to the underlying documentation.
Can we go scatter and make the motion to, uh, accept T S B A revisions to set policies?
Yes, ma'am, we can.
I would like that motion.
We've got a motion on the floor. Ms. Cooper, a second. Ms. Cooper. Uh, my partner down there, Mr. Cody, is any discussion?
Senior moment.
Huh?
Senior moment.
Senior moment. Yeah, I had, I had, I had a thought up my mind. I have a senior moment. Give me one. Any discussion? All the favors say aye. Holes likewise. All right. The next one is monetary. And like I said before, I know Ms. Christie will get hard writing, but I'd really like to have a, a roll call on all monetary items, if you would please. The first one is consideration of the LEA bill and grant budget set up for twenty twenty and twenty twenty one.
Are we doing the paving bill or the other?
Well, it's a new bill. There's a new one. I had the wrong one. It's a new level to revise one make, and I didn't have a copy of it. All right. I'm not talking now of, of the new one. I apologize. I didn't have the new one tonight. Okay. I was using one I had my packet. Y'all sent me. Oh, okay. Monetary consideration of bids for paving road.
I make the motion that we do not pave in this time.
I second that motion with the exception that it be gravelled and used until spring. And that way it can be packed down to allow traffic to go ahead and get off the road, be usable for our school system, open up one forty seven and the, uh, pave comes spring break or I would suggest summer.
But that's to be utilized until the time is dry, it's weather wise to pave.
Did everybody hear that motion and that statement and that discussion?
Say it again. I heard, I heard Sierra's coming to motion.
Okay, now she, let's clear this up to the beginning, okay? You made the motion initially, and she seconded with amendments. Do you concur with her amendments that she put in as your motion?
Yes, I will, uh, what are you saying, uh?
Well, Robert was saying the engineers would make...
The engineers say, you know, if the gravel didn't drove on it this winter, especially with, uh, state grants.
The engineers say that, uh, with the grade the way it is, that if they drove on it after the gravelled it, it would rot it out.
I said, it would be there to replace gravel, but it would be to replace pavement.
I didn't.
Well, that's just what I hear.
It's more cheaper for us to replace gravel, and let's get them off of one forty seven, than it's gonna be to pave it and next year have to pave it again. Surely, it's packed down enough now? Can you all knock it up?
Well, of course, Kenley from Knox is correct. Now, when he came and looked at it, he said he thought it was correct. Of course, he was judging it by... Well, now the city engineers said they could get, uh,
Compacts.
Did, yeah, to come in and, uh, and do some tests on it. Yes.
But he said that those paths were very reliable, so it's, you guys, you'll go ahead and tell you.
Who says it's not, who says it's not reliable?
The city engineer. And I've kind of spoke with Frankie Campbell, who's a city, uh, civil engineer in Detroit. He works for Pave and Capital.
And he works for a paving company, and he recommended that accept it. Now, they do have a mess out there in the afternoons. But I feel like, you know, you make these statements in front of you before you make a decision. You know, you may pave it and do fine. I, I don't know. I'm not in the road building business. Yes, he did. And so did, uh, Tom Bennett. And so did the McCoy guy from the city.
I know my votes don't want a camp, but either we gravel it and use it, or we pave it and use it. But it should have been done before we started.
Well, we're pretty much at the, uh, we were pretty much at the mercy of state government. And, uh, when the city could get ready to do it, uh, we really should appreciate the city for all the work they put in on that, because they, they did most of the work. But putting that together, really getting that lease agreement from the state was, we had to give a lot, some politicians half, or say it was, it was a big deal to get that done.
And we did appreciate that.
We've got a motion and a second. I'm ready to have a vote. Before we can just make any other motion, I don't know. We've got to do one this, okay? We have a motion. You want?
Talk to me in a second. Explain to us in a second what we're gonna do.
Yeah, I got it. Let's circle here. Yeah, it's off the ground. She made a motion.
I make the motion that at Pine Haven with the new drive, that we utilize the way that it is, with it being gravelled, and that we wait to pave it till weather permitted.
So we're gravel it now, use it and take it later.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on that? Y'all heard what the motion that second was?
No discussion.
Any more discussion?
Yes.
Yes, that's the motion of the court.
We need to clarify, till weather permitting.
To clarify, weather permitting in the spring, summer?
Ms. Christie, you go.
Next year.
Okay. All right. Where you go?
Motion by Karen Cooper that Pine Haven's new driveway be utilized the way it is with gravel and pave when weather permitted in the spring.
This is a monetary item, where I spend on the ground, so I'm gonna roll call, okay?
Karen Cooper, Nikki Bowles, Darlene Brennan, Sierra Coker, Felicia Garrett, Bill Cody, Eddie Cook, Melissa Brenstetter, Kathy Williams, Gary.
All right. Motion carries. The second item is a consideration of the LEA reopening grant budget set up for twenty twenty one. I've got a motion by Mr. Cody. Got here a second. Got a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote. Ms. Christie.
Karen Cooper, Nikki Bowles, Darlene Brennan, Sierra Coker, Felicia Garrett, Bill Cody, Eddie Cook, Melissa Brenstetter, Kathy Williams, Gary Peters.
All ye, motion carries. Next is consideration of the twenty first CCLC cohort two nineteen budget setup. Got a motion of Ms. Cooper to accept. Got here a second.
Yes.
A second from Ms. Coker. Any discussion? If no more discussion, roll call, please.
Karen Cooper, Nikki Bowles, Darlene Brennan, Sierra Coker, Felicia Garrett, William Cody, Eddie Cook, Melissa Brenstetter, Kathy Williams, Gary Peters.
All four, motion carries. The next is consideration of the twenty first century grant budget set up for twenty twenty one. Okay. Motion by Ms. Reddy, second by Ms. Cooper. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Karen Cooper, Nikki Bowles, Darlene Brennan, Sierra Coker, Felicia Garrett, Bill Cody, Eddie Cook, Melissa Brenstetter, Kathy Williams, Gary Peters.
All ye, motion carries. Next is consideration of budget amendment for general purpose funds. Got a motion of Ms. Cooper to accept. Do I hear a second? Got a second by Mr. Cody. Any discussion?
Is this in order? Is somebody... A brief, uh, synopsis of what's going on? I never had it. I have one bed.
Here is a reduction in funds that we would not have had, uh, for this relation, that we need to reduce expenditure to that amount in order for our budget to then load into A Plan. And I have to make this budget amendment to the commission Monday night to then approve, so we can get our budget. If we don't approve this budget amendment, we risk the chance of having our funds reduced from B to P. So we pretty much have to, to pass it.
It'll be the one forty one, huh?
Yes, we know it's one forty one.
Yeah. All right. Any other discussion?
This deal, uh, this deal's the type of...
All, all one forty is a hundred percent.
Yeah, we're just taking money out of that to reduce the money coming out of fund balance, so we can bound up the budget into A Plan because we're typing too much, we're typing too much out of our balance to, uh...
To their computer.
Yeah.
This isn't trying to do what we're trying to...
No, 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 no. We're just moving money around so it can go into the computers, so we can start the, the process of the reimbursement for B to P.
All right. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Roll call, Ms. Christie.
Uh, Karen Cooper, Nikki Bowles, Darlene Brennan, Sierra Coker.
Yes, I have any tricks questions, but on something that, that's, yes, it is.
Felicia Garrett, William Cody, Eddie Cook, Melissa Brenstetter, Kathy Williams, Gary Peters.
Motion carries nine one, nine four, one against. All right. The next is consideration of budget amendment for remote learning technology. Okay, got a motion by Mr. Cody, seconded by Ms. Sierra Coker. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Just going at seven hundred and twenty nine thousand four sixty three thirty, and we do not have a place for that many here. Approval letter this week. Again, we thought we were getting eighty three thousand six hundred, and so it's flow through many coming back.
All right. Any more discussion? All right. If not, roll call, Ms. Christie.
Karen Cooper, Nikki Bowles, Darlene Brennan, Sierra Coker, Felicia Garrett, William Cody, Eddie Cook, Melissa Brenstetter, Kathy Williams, Gary Peters.
All four, motion carries. Next is consideration of budget amendment for the Escher and Terrence Act. Got a motion by Ms. Cooper. Got here a second.
Second. I don't care. Be so heavy.
Mr. Cooper raised his hand before you, huh? He, he won. Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right. Roll call.
Karen Cooper, Nikki Bowles, Darlene Brennan, Sierra Coker, Felicia Garrett. Bill Cody. Eddie Cook. Melissa Brenstetter. Kathy Williams. Gary Peters.
All four, motion carries. In old business, uh, we've got consideration of MOU for the 2021 school year. Uh, I think this went back last month when we met, there was issues with, and our board attorney, uh, looked over it. And so forth, could you give us an update, Mr. Ryan, on this?
Yeah, so I think, uh, we met, they met, everybody sent back, uh, the administration of school systems and went through it. We then met again, this was Thursday morning. We met, looked at that draft, there was one, one line I didn't read it. We thought it was probably still silent, we didn't actually look through it, so we sent back, uh, it was a simple issue with the changer and how it interacted, uh, possible. Christie, you might be able to do better if I talk to you, I know the actual, uh,
On page five. Senorita.
Sir, if you agree on that.
I make a motion, second.
I have one question, please. On the, uh, on page eight?
Page eight.
Uh-huh. It says, information containing personnel records shall be limited to all the waiting hours. And that is in the personnel?
This is your personnel policy, so you'll have to speak with Ms. Gina about that one.
Who approves that policy, that's actually a word from the policy?
Okay, um,
The board approved that policy.
I just wanted to, to clarify, like, if, uh, if, uh, Stephen goes out and gets drunk and mows down four hundred people, uh, one twenty-seven, and he's like to hit you or homicide or something, will that go in his personnel file? Was that to all the ladies?
Yes, because they, they can put them in the file.
I think it.
Yes, because they would not slap them, they can just give them a file.
Okay.
Alright. Alright, we've got a motion on the floor, did, Ms. Eric, you made the motion, Ms. Nikki, did you second it? I, I see your hand before, Mr. Cook, okay. We've got a motion on the floor, the second, is there any more discussion? Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose likewise. Aye, aye. Alright. That one is done with. Alright, any other business?
Yes. Go ahead, Marla.
Yes, ma'am, I hear you. Hold on, hold on, Ms. Darlene, I gotta put a microphone, I can't hear her, I just left here.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to see you establish as our chairman two standing committees right now. One of the finance and one for policy. And I can put that in a full collection.
Okay, so what you're saying, you won't need to, to establish two different?
Two different standing committees. One's on finance and one's on policy, we do a lot of policy here. We have a lot of policy questions. And a lot of time, like, some, you know, it's, uh, it's a company, it's, and it's fair enough for us to do that.
We thank, we thank the S V A to do our part.
Okay, we have, uh, rebuttal to your motion, Ms. Brennan, that it should be brought up in a work session first and discussed and then be presented to the board.
We go to the longer work session, we can hear all that.
Okay, I mean, I, I'll do whatever the board wants me to do, but.
We have P S V A for our policies, and that's not something to let the committee about without coming on.
Okay, I've got a, I do have a motion on the floor as it stands, and we need to act upon that if I give a second. Do I have a second to that motion?
I, I think we can discuss this in work session. I think that's, where it is that is so, so. Okay, so you may not understand.
Okay, alright, so I don't hear a second, so this dies for lack of a second, okay, so let's move on. Anything else? This is old business, it can be brought up, they recommend, Ms. Darlene, that it be brought up in a work session first and discussed and then brought back before a board.
I would like, I would like the motion that we amend our COVID protocols as stated, for our learning structure to be resubmitted to us as two percent per school active cases, before we go to scenario two. If we reach five percent active or two percent at all schools, that we switch to scenario three, where we shut down county wide.
Okay, first off, what we need to, we have a current line. So we need to do something about that tonight. We need to make, we need to make a motion, Mr. Johnson.
Oh, that's, I'm, I'm good. And particularly if you have a positive case on the bus, buses are so full, you can end up quarantining ten or fifteen kids. And, you know, either you want your, uh, positive cases to be that, but you also have to include your quarantine students in, in order for you to go with the S I. But it's not unusual, it's happened this year, we try to, if it does not happen, you can ask the principal. If we have a positive case and they quarantine three people, and you shot that number up, I would choose for, uh, something a little higher, to include quarantine students and so too, because we're getting better on quarantine students, but seeing, I've seen a positive case come into school and send a lot of kids home that will replace those numbers here.
Well, you know, Ms. Christie, and staff has already got this worked out in their plan, as she shows you on the board tonight. So, I mean, what you're,
I can amend my motion, right?
Yes, ma'am, you can.
So it's not,
We've not got a second, so you can amend it whatever you want to, okay?
Let me figure how we're, so, my verbiage was two percent positive cases, we go to scenario two. And then two percent county wide, school, all schools, then we go to scenario three.
Five percent.
No, I said five, or five percent per school, but if we're already, does that, does that not, I mean, we're kind of going to contradict, if we're already at two percent, we're going to be shut down before we get to five percent. Right, that's, so we're, we'd have to be two percent.
So you, you know, what you're wanting to do is change the, to the CLP, change the CLP is what you're wanting to do, right?
Yes.
Is that what you want to do? Okay, Ms. Christie.
I probably would do, as Mr. Jones says, we'll, I would probably do a, from what we heard from the other districts that we've talked to and examples we've got, they did a percentage of students that are both quarantined and positive. Uh, I can say one thing within our district, those quarantines are really reconnahabited, whether it's, it's a student or a teacher. Uh, that's where a lot of even staffing with substitutes is playing a role, and then our virtual teachers, it's a merry-go-round picking those kids up and getting them on the line. So I, I would recommend, as he said, to do something on the lines, uh, positive on quarantine. Overton, Mr. Jones correct, if I'm wrong, was, uh, thirteen to fifteen percent. And I would probably recommend that fifteen.
And that's per school, so we're only going to be quarantining once per time, unless it gets to a certain, say, county wide, we can warn them.
I, I'm just saying, one district, close all schools in the second. But you, you know, you say, imagine to say, several districts have signed, you know, like, uh, Cherokee Hospital was on virtual, or thing that, like, one, I'm, I'm, we have a problem, it's, it's such a thing to be making to, you know, four, and we're, we're closer to Vansberry this year. But, uh, you know, you, you gotta have to talk to God, like, who's supposed to say, now we're quarantined.
Uh, we did twenty percent for flood and rock to shut school.
And we shut down, and we shut down county wide at that point, non-per school. Um, let's redo, I'm going to amend my motion to change our policy to, I'm not, I'm sorry, it's not a policy, our protocol, excuse me, our protocol for fifteen percent quarantine, then we close twenty-four hours. Quarantine and positive, yes, together, if they're positive, they're already quarantined, so that's included, um, Okay, active, positive, active quarantine. Anybody else who can think of any? Okay, I'm going to keep going. Active, positive, active quarantine, we close for twenty-four hours, clean the school, K three two continues. And, and three, three twelve. I'm sorry, three K three two continues, and then three through twelve goes virtual. Per school. I said per school earlier, but, throw that again.
Okay. Read the motion, Ms. Christie.
Sierra, can I ask a question? In your motion, are you meaning this to be that scenario two, because in scenario three, our K two doesn't come back, I just want to clarify that.
Scenario two at fifteen percent. Is that not what's being advised?
Yes.
At twenty, at, at twenty, okay, then add at twenty percent, we go scenario three. There we go, I hear you. Is that makes sense? That would be, that would be, that would be really fluid with that. Per school, at fifteen, we're scenario two, at twenty, we're scenario three, per school. I, I think Darlene's question is, who's going to make the call based upon, we've already hit our numbers that we had before, and we didn't follow our protocol that we had set.
We can't, we can't have a regular school. We didn't tell us that the other week.
Yeah, the other week. Alright, uh, the reason why I asked, Ms. Christie, to read that over is I want to make sure that it's the minutes are correct, whenever we get it back next month, so, so we don't have no questions, so we might have to do that. When she gets done writing, I'll let her read that motion again, and we had a motion, and seconded a motion. By Ms. Eric, and had a second by Ms. Cooper. Borrowing a judgment from her, please, up on it.
Well, I mean, depends on how bad it gets, you can reevaluate if you need.
No, I mean, where we've already hit it, we're going to continue where we're at, is that right? Now we go to this now, pardon America, now he's just now giving it service, the numbers are going to continue to up, we're only going to see, I bet you fifteen percent, so I don't want to come back here and have to reevaluate this again, because nobody wants to let school out. That's the question, so maybe I can, I can, no, maybe it's fifteen, there's no more discussion, we're there, closing. A lot of things we're trying to follow, so it's based on schools, not based on county.
Yeah, that's what it is.
So that's what we're following, once we get to, like, that's like, oh, we're going to do that now. But we're, we're, to clarify for those listening, watching, we're not closing school tomorrow with, because our quarantine numbers are not that great.
Exactly.
So we would remain open this week, go fall break next week, and of course, it would reevaluate as of Monday, after fall break, to what our quarantine numbers coming in at that point.
I don't understand the process on Friday, and just go in and do the quarantine days, because we've got time on that to make it, so if we,
Listen, listen, yeah.
We need to send that stuff home, and parent parents, we need to have babysitters fly it back for fall break, and we'll take those quarantine days.
Let's, let's do the policy first, and then if you want to do the two weeks off, we'll come back, and if somebody make a motion with it, okay? Two separate things. Alright, Ms. Christie's ready, everybody listen up now, listen up, so you don't have no questions.
Amend our current learning structure protocol in the CLP to individualize by school, with scenario two occurring when fifteen percent of active quarantine and positive cases within the school. The school will close for twenty-four hours for cleaning, then three through twelve would go virtual, and K two come back into the school. Scenario three would occur after twenty percent of active quarantine and positive cases.
Yes.
We've got a motion on the floor, we've got a second. Let's do a roll call on this.
No, we're cleaning, we're just cleaning on, there's two of them, it's on those these days, so we're, we're going to make that motion next.
We're going to talk about that, people.
Roll call vote. Karen Cooper. Nikki Bowles. Darlene Brennan. Sierra Cogan. Felicia Garrett. William Cody. Eddie Cook. Melissa Brenstetter. Kathy Williams. Gary Peters.
All ye, so that matters, now you can discuss the, uh, next week and the week after that, if somebody wants to bring in a discussion.
That's what the health department recommended, the health department recommended that. And I text him, and I should have verification of that, and all of it. Uh, he recommended, if we get through this week, we send our stuff home, we give parent notification of what we're going to do after, uh, fall break. We take those, uh, seven, or, excuse me, the next week, virtual, and then that will allow the teachers and the parents of the time to, uh, plan for, uh, for instruction. Plus, it will give the parents time to plan if they don't have anybody to keep for children, that they know ahead of time that they're going to be, uh, off. They're going to have to wait a few days, then we come back in person.
But I don't think that's just a place on the numbers that we have here, I thought we just,
But the health department recommended, meaning if we do that today, that if we're not closed today, that we get through the week. I'm in discuss changing the second meeting, right? I mean, that's what he recommended.
Yeah, I'm going to, you can, this, right here, up until, uh, but the right, that right yellow green was on the side, there it's put on, it was under the reopening plan, and I went to look at it today, and it was not on there, it was taken off. So now that it's going to be amended, I would like to see this put back on the reopening plan, but I would like to see it added this on here too, so you can see this whole percentage, so when you, So you can see the school percentages, so when it gets that fifteen percent or close to it, you know you expect that your child may be coming home. And if you put on it every single day, you'll say, oh, God, well, I went to that, now it's at fifteen percent, or yesterday, that were fourteen percent, we may be going home or something, doesn't...
We'll do it.
I don't know, I have the fact, this was, this was like the background we were making, so I did a couple of size, I would like to do a couple of size. Wait, we can see this play. It hits the back panel, but then it gets it to be focused on. That's fine, Eric, that's fine too. Just something that we go say.
If, if we've got, like, an exhale, instead of, that is, all women or something, or maybe you're like, uh, yeah.
All right.
Ms. Darlene, get her up.
Okay, I'm on, I'm on, come on.
Yes, Karen, Ms. Darlene, your place.
Well, I think we'll, let us get through this COVID.
All right, now, now, now.
We're, we're on the regular green, uh, current policy versus what we just get done.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a note, very simple, I want the children, I'm proud, to be prepared to go virtual a week from Monday. If the number is more than that. If they don't, we have school.
Okay.
I make a motion that we, that we send the computers home with them on Friday, so we can be prepared to go virtual a week from Monday, is that what you recommended? The week after fall break?
You want me to make a determination during spring break, or near fall break?
Well, you... You want me to do that, and you want me to... I'm going to withdraw my motion, sir.
I'd like to make a motion. That as per the, the guideline, since the Department of Health gave us, that we utilize going to school this week, during the process of this week, we'll send the Chromebooks and whatever materials need to be sent home with the children. We'll be off for fall break, we will be off the week after with virtual education. And during that time, the numbers could be gathered during that, the second week, of what will be virtual, the extended fall break. And that way, and then we'll have school members to determine whether we stayed our tour or returned to school.
All right, got a motion on the floor, by Ms. Cooper, second, by Mr. Cook. Have you got that down, Ms. Christie? She probably won't help me anymore. All right, listen up.
I'm not sure I've captured this correctly. Motion as per guidelines that the Department of Health gave, uh, Mr. Jones, send home devices this week, Friday, before fall break. Be off for fall break and be off the week after fall break to reevaluate the numbers.
All right, has anybody got any more question? We've got a motion and a second on the floor, we're going to have to vote on this, anybody got? Read it, she's going to read it one more time, I would just be quick.
Motion as per guidelines that the Department of Health gave Mr. Jones, send home devices, the end of this week on Friday, and be off for fall break. And on the following week after fall break, go virtual for the full week, all students K-12. Pre-K.
All right, has anybody got any more discussion on that, we want to vote. All in favor say aye. Is anybody opposed? All eyes happy. All right. Got a motion to adjourn? Uh, Ms. Erin, would you, you read what you said, uh, would you say it again, what you said?
She said that she spoke to Mr. Cameron on base about recording our meetings, it's, Darlene, did you say a hundred dollar charge? One hundred dollars per month to record board meetings, that does not have them aired, that would have to be aired based on sponsorship, but that will have us recording to go back and verify any questions per meeting. That would be stored. Oh, we could pay a hundred dollars for six sponsor for the hundred dollar to have it aired.
Okay, did you put that in form of motion, Ms. Brandon?
Is that in a form of a motion, Darlene?
Yes, it is, I think that's reasonable, but I think we need to do a free check.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor, did everybody hear, Ms. Brandon? You got that down, Ms. Christie? Do I hear a second on that motion before we go any further? Got a motion on the floor, do I hear a second? All right, we don't have a second on that motion.
Motion that, the only comment they was that they wish to see sponsorship if considered. That was all the comment they had.
All right, now it's like a motion, we have a motion on the floor already, by Ms. Cooper, and a second by Mr. Cook to adjourn. Next meeting day is November the second, at Pine Haven Elementary School at five thirty.